Well, that's fair. I take it away from you if I've known about it. You know what to solve this is if you just give it to Sherry, someone responsible adults that can hang on to it. You have a pencil and has a razor, I think you're okay.
This is gonna be a first reading tonight. It can't be a vote because it's something to be announced. So when it's gonna be is it's the first reading and then they'll go back to the next one. We have to wait until we have to. I thought it was gonna be a vote.
Right, Jared?
Staffs are right.
Just letting you know. Now, you ready to get this thing on?
I'm up. I've been waiting for seven minutes. Because I took two before.
We got everybody in hand.
Did anyone come up and tell you they were pregnant?
Huh?
Kevin from St. uh St. Mary's.
Oh, yeah, he's back there. Okay. I was gonna say, I thought that's who it was, but um yeah, it's Deacon Kevin Daly.
Kevin Daly of St. Mary's.
From St. Mary's. I was like, I I didn't see him back there.
All right, let's get the city council meeting ordered. Say it quick. Pledge allegiance and then the prayer will be by Kevin, Deacon Kevin from St. Mary's.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And follow son of the Holy Spirit. Dear fathers gathered tonight as like your officials with charity and our hearts to govern this meeting. Let the Holy Spirit come upon them with wisdom and knowledge to they and to operate as one. Reminding remembering that charities needs to be first and foremost. We've left this gathering of people as they go about their lives. And we pray that all those not able to attend will be able to attend in the future. And pray for all those who may have deceased this day and all those others. We ask this to your son Jesus Christ, to the God who is there, God, right in our heart.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, looks like everybody's here. We roll call. So we got everybody up here tonight. Title six, Austin.
Yes, sir. Title six. As a recipient of federal funds, the City of Aurora offers a voluntary survey to gather statistical data regarding participants and beneficiaries of its federally programs and activities. The survey is to gather information about the populations affected by city of Aurora activities. If you need one of these surveys, I have some in my office. Also, just a note, this meeting is live recorded. You can catch it on YouTube if you ever need to.
All right. So we'll go to our department head updates. Mr. Phelps.
Uh, turnout being busy here today. It happened today. We're fourteen hundred eighty-nine calls. It's got two hundred thirty overall over last year. Did two hundred twenty-one calls last month. Uh, Farmers Fair, two thousand four, eight hundred twelve here. Uh, sold out of RACOS like three hours, fourteen dozen day nights, twenty dozen days good. I don't have any now. I was really. But awesome sponsor this year. Chipped in and helped out. Besides that, um, I think our new track's back at the factory service again. It's probably this time they're gonna get it right. So you see it's out with this blender, deal, white, red, silver. Doesn't have anything on it, so. But we're expected to have that in the private week or two as um as we move.
Man. I know I know a lot of places sold out on their breakfasts and it's the best to eat, but everybody had breakfast. Seems like they sold out.
Yeah, we keep coming in before we open the box or the IG thing.
Yeah.
We almost sold out before we opened them, but it was awesome. We had a second crew on all week for dedicated to the fair. That wasn't really good. Not not too busy this year.
Yeah, I think the weather had something to do with that, too, but that was nice. Usually snowing on us or raining or something is pretty nice out.
It's a good weekend. We're glad to turn out.
Yeah. All right. Anybody got any questions for uh Dave with DMS? Like know how he makes his biscuits and gravy?
I just wanna say thanks for being able to be quick to go over and help out on the bridge. When when the kiddo got hurt over there, that was uh um of all places. It scared you to death if it happened at all, but to have it happen right there, tight quarters, you guys were able to get over there. Thanks to everybody that was kinda helping the rest of us stay in the loop if you're kinda seeing what the fragrance deals with, so. Nice job.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, Chief.
We had full fifty-one weeks in the month of September. You can see the different types of roads. We had thirty-eight within the city limits for township, six in Washington. We sit the north for twice, uh and build grill three times. Uh, again, fairly pretty smooth. Uh, there were five of us that stayed at the fire out from Tuesday to Sunday, twenty-four hours, around the clock. Then in the morning, we did fire prevention from eight to two, all the way from Tuesday to Thursday. And we were very, very busy all week. And by the end of that day, we were on tougher doubt. But uh, we did have a house fire on Sunday, on Monday morning. That was about a twelve-hour day, but had a lot of help from Wyland and Rocky Sun, Lawrenceburg, Grainedale. Uh, we even had Miami Township from Ohio come to help us. And as a thought of the lack of manpower about the fire community, so uh but uh they did come down to help us. Uh, chicken fries November the second, eleven four. If anybody wants to help volunteer, because we are down on manpower. Get home councilwoman Pam Parker. She's lining up all the volunteers that we're gonna need it. On the house going on, that's right. There's Friday and Saturday, so I think November the first. And that is like seven thirty to ten thirty. And uh, I did have a meeting with Washington Township Board. They had invited me to come to one of their meetings. They were working on their budgets. They've uh dedicated by here what we needed, a couple sets at a time. Something to do by radios. They're permitted to buy two AM dial on base, one engine. So they invited me to come and ask me for my input and uh it went pretty well, so. I'm gonna do by radios. They're gonna help us out. Other than that, everything is going good. We just gotta get our, pump that thing down. We'll be good. Just get the fish fry done.
Chicken fried.
I wanna do chicken.
Chicken. You fry the fish, too?
The chicken fried fire. I still use the fish fried and chicken fried. And we did help with the practice down on fifty-six, but it wasn't as what we thought it was gonna be, but uh we did help. We all work together. I mean, we get the accident scenes and they get the fires first and and like I said, hopefully in December, uh two or three members of the PHD member uh is going to be more involved about it. But just gotta finish up a few damn things and stuff on my paperwork and get it turned in. Hopefully in December, we have a big crowd and honor them for their heroic act and what they did. He did survive and he died well, so he is out.
That's really good.
But the team was always there to get.
Anybody got anything for Fire Chief? Police Chief?
Y'all know about the September. We had a hundred forty traffic stops. We incarcerated twenty-seven. They had twenty traffic crashes. Three of those were injuries. Forty-eight cases. We went on three hundred ninety-nine runs. We patrolled nine thousand five hundred forty-two miles. We had a hundred thirty-four blockings downstairs last month. We did our emergency capable operations training every year. We have to do that every year. That completes us out for all our training. We've done all our end dates, so other than that, everything's good.
Everything's good. How about a drone update? We use it for the fair?
We did use it for the fair on two nights, then we did during a break. We were able to do some surveillance of the drone, make sure the cops are clear, make sure all the second story windows, there wasn't anything going that shouldn't have gone, so it worked out really nice. So we'll we'll have a little program.
Yeah. I doubt anything or I doubt that anybody would try anything at the fair, but you never know. You might be safe. I'm sorry. Yeah. We do appreciate all three of you for what you did during the fair and everything. I mean, you guys all worked together. The Lions Club put this together. People don't realize the hours that they put in just constantly being around here. I mean, everybody wants to save the fair, raise hell about the fair, not have the beer garden. We'll bring that up, but anyway. We do appreciate everything you do, so thank you. All right. Looks like we're jumping over the main street. Here's a new face here, Leslie.
Uh, I'm Leslie Sutherland and I'm part of Aurora or Main Street Aurora. I also serve on Dillsborough Main Street and I'm the director for the Aurora Public Library District. Um, I serve as an ex-officio member on Main Street Aurora in Haas since twenty twenty-three. Uh, and so we like to rotate uh different people to come in and speak with you, so I'm really delighted to be here for you. As my role as director, uh we have locations at our old branch here, nineteen four or uh four fourteen from that was built in nineteen fourteen, that ranch. We also have the Train Depot. Um, and we have the Dillsborough Ranch. The Dillsborough Ranch is under renovation right now. Uh, we are hoping to add a bookmobile for our district, so we added a garage and we expanded the children's area. And we are also adding some reservable study grounds and meeting rooms that we we don't have really in our district at all. So that's one thing. The caboose, we did purchase a caboose uh on George Street and are working with the architect right now, an engineer, to get that moved to uh Wrightwood Depot uh that will be accessible. Um, so that's also in the works. Um, and then, um, so we've got just a lot of things going on with the library and lots of programming uh that we try to do. We do storytime four times a week in the district. We have programs for tweens, teens. Uh, we have adult programming and crafts, and one thing we do is try to stay very involved with the community. And so we we, for instance, uh do support Main Street Aurora. We uh pay for the reindeer that come to our Miracle on Main. Uh, we also support the Morso Winter Walk with donation of books and we assist with the Dillsborough Hometown Christmas. So we try to stay very involved with the community. But back to Main Street Aurora, um you will find the newsletter um here and it's got so many great things that uh reflect, you know, how to get people downtown and all the great work that goes on in our community, so mark your calendars for those things. Uh, if you have not sent in your membership or support forms, uh this is the time to do that. Your financial support is for your city of Aurora, so we really hope to to have support from everyone. Uh, those funds support special events, public relations, and also revitalization. Since our September council meeting, Christian Dallas and the staff are making progress on the United Way mural uh on Alejandro's. Uh, September twenty-fifth, fifteen people participated in the historical residential walking tour. Uh, myself, Michelle Jarvis, and Tabitha Turner represented Aurora at Preserving Historic Conference uh place, Preserving Historic Places Conference in Fort Wayne in September. Um, that's a really wonderful, there's lots of inspirational stories about communities who have revitalized their downtown through Main Street activities and and events, so it's very helpful. Uh, we also ask that you please put November thirteenth on your calendar. Okra and Indiana Main Street will be making a site visit for national accreditation. I'm sure Nancy will be reaching out to you individually for specific times. Uh, usually there's a couple of different sessions that we have to fill and and both board members and just community leaders.
Leslie, did you say fourteenth or fifteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Not 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 any of them.
The thirteenth. And then just a reminder that the Ghost Walk is Thursday and Friday, October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Make reservations. And we have a Halloween Friday on October twenty-fourth also, so please mark your calendars to participate in those things. Any questions? Yep.
Are you still rattling off the bench with the eagle?
Great question. We are. We will be rattling that off until December?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. So yes, we are using those funds. Uh, we have that uh um bench donated. It's a car eagle. And we'd make a great Christmas present for someone, so you can contact the Main Street Aurora person for tickets. Uh, and so we can raise those dollars. Great question. Any?
Leslie, uh who's coming down for predination on the third chair?
Um, I don't know the specific people who are.
I don't mean people. I mean who are in this stage.
Okra.
Okra.
And Indiana Main Street.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. That that is usually an annual visit and their leadership or their administrative team comes down from both of those groups. Yes, no problem.
I hear uh you bought a caboose?
We bought a caboose, yes. We bought Pat Meyer's caboose, and so we are um hoping to move it behind the depot. Um, so it's parallel to the tracks and that we we are gonna put a new platform behind the depot that will uh have a wheelchair ramp. We are going to create a door that's accessible um on the upper, on the end closest to the depot, so that people who are wheelchairs or ambulatory can get in it. We're hoping to redo the inside of it to make a display space and also potentially a storytime or a live um history performer, things like that in that space. Um, it's a nineteen sixties caboose, so we aren't really focusing on the historic element of it on the interior. But the exterior, uh it's actually an L and N caboose, but we are going to paint it the B and O orange colors. The B and O uh orange was um when our uh depot, this depot was built, was nineteen sixteen. That was our third depot. And so this, at that time, the the marketing colors for a B and O were Indian red or this orange and a brown. So we're, that's uh they they're, that it's very, it's gonna be very similar to what we currently have, but that's why we'll be doing that. And so um we've done several phases of the depot. We did interior renovation, painting it, um making it more uh utilitarian. We can, it's a meeting space, uh it's a classroom, it's a a classroom. It's also a a library. Um, then we just recently did the exterior work where we added a handicap accessible ramp, asphalted the parking lot, strike the parking lot, uh fixed the gutters, the gutters, uh even though they had redone the roof about, I don't know, fifteen years ago. Uh, the eaves on the depot were were rotting. Uh, it was a very bad repair. So we got those um repaired and uh it's looking, it looks fantastic right now. And then, so this is kind of phase three where we are gonna be moving that caboose. And um the library has a foundation, a PLD foundation, uh that we get, when we get rid of that money, those dollars go into our foundation and all of the depot work has been paid for out of the uh foundation dollars. So none of it's come from our tax base.
Okay.
So anyway.
How are you gonna get it over there? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Pat, Pat knows a guy. So um he's got a guy and uh so I've reached out to my uh architect because we had that in the potential for the bids on who would move it. So Pat, though, I I've reached out to them about pulling that out of the bid language and hiring it, at least to get it moved, possibly somewhere uh over by the, our property uh joins the the city's property where the fruit stand is. So I I if we can get it, if we can get it separated out of that bid, then we may try to just go ahead and move it and put it in place in in a temporary staging location till we can finish the rest of the work. Uh, but we are hoping to, we're gonna add a mini split unit to it for HVAC. Um, free up the, right now with some of the plumbing and the uh duct work, uh you you can't really see through the wheels. So we're gonna open that up. We're gonna have um some simulated ties put down that it's going to sit on. So um we're gonna make it look as authentic as possible, uh if we can. But but I don't, I mean, Pat's got a guy, so that's, he's got someone who will move it.
He knows a guy that knows a guy.
Yeah, he knows all the guys.
And that's all you wanna know about that?
Yes. So uh but but our, the architects had originally wanted to wrap it into the bid. So right now I'm looking if we can pull it out and just go ahead and get it moved and and have it over there. And that way we can continue to work um later on the getting the rest of the plan built. Um, but our goal is to 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 have it create a um a nice gateway into downtown. Uh, we hope to redo the, we have right now brick pathways that people purchase bricks um at the, at Aurora and at Dillsborough. But we wanna redo that campaign because I've had several people ask and see if they could, they can get it dedicated to family members. Um, and so we are gonna redo those brick paths and we're gonna put, um we're hoping to put two statues um there that are bronze, similar to the, it's from the same company that has our bronze statues in front of the library. One is a conductor and the other one is a a woman in period dress with a child and a soup case running to the train. So that will be in on the brick pathway going up to the depot. So I think it'll be a nice opening and welcoming uh space to that and um, you know, just continue to highlight uh this, you know, wonderful historic building that we we, the community has kept going really, so.
Well, thanks for everything. I know the kids and the preschools love coming over to your place.
It's great when we, I wish I could get the trains to be scheduled when we have these classes. Cause it's just, they absolutely love to be that close to the trains when we have, because we like, we do a field trip with fourth graders in November. And we have the model training adapters come and they set up uh and do STEM activities with model trains. And so all the fourth graders in South Yerborn and Saint John's are, we pay for the transportation for them to come down and they rotate between the train depot. Then they, we have a huge map of Indiana that fills the floor of this room. And so we have extra socks for kids, but we do different geography activities on that map at the public library at Aurora. So they rotate from the depot to the public library. Then they also go to Hill Forest and we sponsor, we pay for those kids to go through Hill Forest. And the Lions Club lets us have lunch at their facility. So it's just, it becomes this big uh two-day field trip uh event. Um, but they love it when a train like comes by and we are having that. But not all, not all the kids get it, cause it's kind of hit or miss, so. Anyway, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for everything. All right. That'll be interesting to see over there. I know we always like to, like a little icon over here of George Street Bridge. Everybody gets to see it right there. It's gonna be kind of naked over there once it's gone now.
Pat's fine with that.
Yeah. I'm sure he is.
He's got other plans for that space, so he can't wait for it to go.
Yeah.
It's been blocks with his family, but it it it'll be nice to have it back um at the the depot really. It'll be a fun location for it.
Uh, thanks, Leslie. Multi-financial report, Mr. Benny.
Oh, we'll skip over a monthly report. We'll wait to talk about budget. Uh, if you wanna go ahead and straight to the uh claims.
Claims. All right. Did everybody get a chance to see the claims?
Yep.
Get a motion to approve the claims?
Oh, motion to approve the claims.
Michelle, second?
Second.
Pam, on favor? Everybody get to check the minutes out. Get a motion to pass the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Sherry, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Pay the bills.
Calling favor kitchen.
What?
Kitchen. Ooh, I don't know who that is. Siri. Didn't even say Siri.
Keep your comments to yourself, Mr. Mayor. My secretary's listening.
Kitchen. I don't know. Anyway, okay.
Bless it.
Okay, let's go over to annexation. Um, Jared, you wanna handle that?
Yeah, absolutely. We got a big, the big meeting is coming up. Uh, we're trying to schedule it right before the November council meeting. Um, so per, so possibly if if something goes wrong, we have December to still pass it. We had to, but at least get it approved this year. Uh, things we're still working on and still trying to get REED to finish the study. Uh, if you've been to any of these uh informational sessions, we've had six of them now. They've been a lot of fun. Uh, but one of the comments is that we needed to update the the financials on that, so I'm trying to work with uh Caitlin from REED Financial to give me an updated schedule of what's the uh actual impact, uh because the old impact was from twenty twenty-two, so it's a little raw. Uh, other than that, I have a almost finished ordinance um for that. Um, the ordinance, of course, is a beast, you know. Uh, besides dedicating who's gonna be the councilperson, um what kind of zoning the place is gonna have. We have other issues about what the city has promised. Um, if you've been to those informational sessions, we've we've said we're gonna do this, that, and the other. Well, that's gotta be in the ordinance and has to be approved. So uh please, please check the newspaper. I should be releasing a date pretty soon here, uh as soon as I figure out when we can do it. Uh, but the the goal is before the November meeting.
So you're thinking first week of November?
Yeah.
Hopefully have REED lock those numbers down.
Have a big old hearing, show the maps, get everything out, get everybody Latin, we'll ask her off.
Just have a hearing. We don't need a big old one.
It's been a lot of work, so hopefully it's well attended, so.
Jared, uh so you didn't know that before, is that what you think, the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But not before the council meeting, before the council meeting.
The goal is to try to get it before council meeting. Yeah. That's the goal.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Parks Master Plan.
Yeah, so last month, the Park Board as well as City Council approved for us to start conducting a Parks Master Plan with SERPCY. SERPCY does a lot of grants and plans for different organizations and municipalities around, and they wanted to get into the Parks Master Plan. And they were looking for someone to be their pilot and we offered. And uh typically these plans cost anywhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand. SERPCY offered to do ours for a thousand as we are a pilot, so we graciously accepted that and it, that has started, so. They put up three boards. One is at the Arc, one is at, I believe, Weber Sports, and the third one is about to go to Spire's Coffee. And those three boards are just gonna kind of rotate around the city to different businesses and places. And what they are is there's post-it notes and you write on the post-it and you stick it on the board in one of the sections. And it's basically which parks do you really like, which ones need improved, what would you like to see, different things like that. Uh, that's the current part of the process that we're in, and once that's done, we'll compile all of the information. We'll start having steering committee meetings. And then we'll go from there. But the overall goal of it is to just get a plan for how we want the parks to move forward for the next, you know, probably five to seven years is typically what these plans are good for, so. Uh, we have some good progress, and like I said, if you see one of those boards, please fill it out and let us know your honest thoughts. Any council member have questions about the Parks Master Plan?
Are the boards currently out?
Uh, yes. Two are currently out, one's in my office, and that one's gonna go to Spire's.
Okay.
I think we're gonna do about a two-week rotation and find three new ones for them.
Okay.
All right. Move down to the docks. Uh, everybody hasn't heard, we did buy nine docks through our redevelopment. They were the Hooters docks. They went bankrupt, so we got to bend in on the docks and we're trying to really find a home for them. A little bit here and there. We got a few ideas for them. We wanna put some over here on uh by Lesko Park, three or four of them. But we have the North Side Trail going on, and you wanna discuss that a little bit more on things going on for that? And then we'll bring Eric Lang up here as land consultant. We got working on that.
Yeah, so if you've been coming to the meetings for the past couple of years, we've been talking about North Side Trail. It's a great project. It connects the two sides of the city that US fifty split. We've had a lot of hiccups with this project due to the railroad not wanting us to go through their tunnel, under their tunnel, over their tunnel, around their tunnel. Uh, you know, US fifty, uh Endot didn't want us to go alternative routes on fifty. So we've been at a red block for, what, two years, trying to figure out how to do this thing. And when we were able to obtain the docks, the mayor thought, well, let's try to go around the tunnel in the water. So the current path that we're looking at is having a trail that goes basically from George Street Bridge and it will go around and it will actually go around this railroad. Um, and it will bring you out of Waterways Marina. And then that will have access to go to all the parks, the city pool, the city park, you know, everything that we have on the other side of US fifty. We're working through it. Uh, it seems like the railroad doesn't have any jurisdiction in the water, which is a good thing. It might be the the one thing that they can't tell us no on, so. Um, we we did hire a land consultant to help us work through these issues, and if you would like to say anything on the progress, that'd be awesome.
Sure. Eric Lang with Land Consultants for right down there in Lawrenceburg next to Whiskies. Uh, we're the design professional at least tasked with helping you guys get a roadmap as to what uh we're gonna do to try to get this done from a permitting uh permission standpoint. Given that you're in the water, uh you're going underneath the railroad, you're going underneath Endot. Uh, there's kind of a joke in the office that you have kicked the golden hornet's nest of bureaucracy as far as who you will need to get permission from. of bureaucracy as far as who you will need to get permission from. So everyone from Indiana Department of Environmental Management, IDM, N-DOT, Railroad, Army Corps of Engineers, and probably a few that haven't been admitted yet will need to get permission from. The, the idea that we kind of came up with based, wow, this must be a thing.
Siri talking to you now?
Yeah, talking to me now.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone.
Stop sending that, will you?
I wonder if she may run this.
They're always listening. Remember that.
Absolutely, absolutely. But the, the, the biggest hurdle I think in this, because I've dealt with all these other agencies with good success, the biggest hurdle is the railroad. And the way we're kind of attaching this at the moment is the dock will be anchored on either side of US-50 right-of-way and railroad so that nothing touches the land other than where it's either city property or privately owned property that are people you can meet face-to-face and negotiate with or probably are already on board with this project. I made a call to Gary Kent. If you, if you Google him, you'll find him fairly well published and he's a surveyor for Schneider. He's kind of a railroad expert. And I walked through with him what we were trying to do and explained that we had an navigable water underneath the railroad and he agreed that, yeah, we're in a lot more favorable position because the railroad's not really going to be able necessarily tell you straight up no and get out of here. They truly do not own the riverbed underneath that navigable waterway, so we're going to still have to deal with everybody and the railroad we're going to have to deal with. But what his knee jerk was is we will be seeking a license, basically just permission, and it's more of a, hey, you know I'm there and I know you're there and we're going to work together, but it's not a scenario where the railroad has this huge amount of power to hold over your head. These are preliminary things that we're thinking about, but I'm talking to some of the people that, if I had to call anybody, these are the people I would call to, to get a bead on where we're at. I did reach out to N-DOT. I've got a different number of someone else to reach out to N-DOT. They don't get back to me too quick. But I've done some railroad right-of-way research. I've done some US-50 right-of-way research and I've got some other projects we've done around, actually near the, the Caboose Project. We've done some surveying there. I'm starting to kind of compile a base map. I'm wanting to get to a point where we can look at how many docks you've got, make sure that we can span the area that we need to span so that we're on firm footing on either side and we can say, okay, this is generally pencil sketch how this dock will fit. This is who we're going to be impacting on either side and that rudimentary sketch can be forwarded to all the people we need to get permission from so that we don't kind of bump our head and find out there's a showstopper problem in there somewhere. You don't want to go through the design of all this and then find out you run into some hundred thousand dollar problem you didn't see because you didn't kind of check with everybody before you take off down that road. So that's kind of the, the mode we're in right now is putting these kind of big pieces together and making sure everybody that we talk to has a pretty clear picture of what we're asking and we can fine tune that design and idea as we get through that.
As you work on that, you mentioned all the parties involved, whether it's just the courtesy of saying this is what we want to do. Does DNR weigh in on this as far as the waterway itself and?
Yes.
Okay, so they're, they're involved from the get-go as well?
Yes. DNR, IDM are the tail that gets wagged by the Army Corps of Engineers. So a lot of what you will ask them, they will respond in the early phases with, well, what did the corps say? So once I get the corps to understand what's going on, then they speak a little more freely. But yeah, those three guys are kind of pretty tight-knit, but the corps usually blinks first.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brandon Willis brought him down for us on his tugboat old Abe. I think Brett, did you ride on the tugboat with him or did you just meet him down there?
Briefly, not about, I don't remember.
All right. I know Jake Orca drove it down, or piloted it, I guess. He piloted it down, but that was nice. I've been sitting at the end of, if you go across the bridge, George Street Bridge, you look over to the right if you're coming this way, you'll see it right there at the mouth of Hogan and the river, but there's nine of them sitting down there. It looks pretty sharp. It's going to be really, really interesting. We already got somebody interested in bringing a boat in or a floating restaurant, too, if we get the docks out there like we want them, so hopefully that'll take, take scores. All right. Sunnyside McCartney.
We got that one, Pat.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. This is ordinance 2025-15. This was read last month and it was a approval of the McCarty, McCarty property that, from R1 to agricultural. As we remember, this is land right on the hinterlands of Aurora. Basically, it's as far away from the center of town as you can get. And so a chain shag, a call tried to leave, that no one had any issue or anything like that. Does anybody have any questions, any concerns or any argument before we call for a vote on this? All right, seeing no comments, I ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2025-15.
I'll make a motion to approve 2025.
I'll second it.
Jonae seconded it. Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Kerry, please, I'm going to put this right here for you guys. We got a couple of these tonight, so please sign before you leave.
Any other ones there? Just jump down to the budget. All right, um, we got the 2026 budget going on. You want to go over anything, Benny, or did you want me just ask for a motion to table it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if the numbers are out there, we need to have a meeting, it sounds like. In order to get everybody feeling good about this, the next meeting we're going to have, I guess we're going to have one on the 27th. Do we have a time?
We, we need to make time before then.
Well, that's what I was going to say first, is the 27th for the passage and then in between today and that day, we need to have a, a meeting with everybody to, to get on board with this. So do we have a time for the 27th?
What do you think? Five o'clock good, or you want to do like six?
I'm busy at six.
You're busy at six?
That's right. Busy.
I don't live in this, 27th is, is like the drop dead date for this, so if we can schedule a meeting prior to that, I, I say that because Mahal has to have a couple of biopsies. I'm taking her to St. E. For on the 27th.
Yeah, but legally, we just need to table it for the 27th. We'll have our other meetings in the 27th.
All right.
So we just, right now, we're just looking for a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'd say probably five o'clock. Put it out there.
Five o'clock on the 27th?
Yeah, if everybody can make.
I'll be back.
Is this a public meeting?
I can get to the meetings before.
Yes.
Discuss and get everything settled.
Yeah, 20th, it will be a public meeting.
And then how will the public be notified?
Yeah, Jared will take care of all that.
Well, and Debbie, like I said, this is one of those that we will be advertising it. Once a date, as soon as I know a date, I'll put it up record. It takes a week now. I don't, I don't get the special treatment. Laura, if you could help us out. They changed. You have to now give them, you have to be a week ahead. You can't just give them a quick notice. So anything I say right now won't be scheduled till, not this Thursday, but the Thursday after. So if that makes sense, it's always a week after.
But we may not see that in the paper.
You may not see it in the paper.
So how else will we be notified?
We'd be, we will be placing notices on the city building of the meeting. That's per statute, so that'll be put up as soon as we know.
Okay.
Other things are, of course, I hate to do this to poor Mr. Austin. If you're curious, please call Mr. Austin and he'll tell you exactly when the meeting's going to be scheduled.
Can, can we not update the website to let people know to watch for that?
Expletive.
Okay. All of these.
I can't. I can't do that. I'm going to work. All right, so we'll get the zoning.
All right, uh, Jared, Woodlawn Development.
Absolutely. This is a first presentation of ordinance 2025-19, ordinance to change zoning classification of certain real estate. And so I'm just going to go through it. This is, like I said, this is a zoning ordinance. Pursuant to statute, we cannot pass this under one reading. It must be two readings. So any event, what it is is, well, I'll say it real quick. Whereas Emmert Lefler, the property owner of the subject parcels, this being the Woodlawn project, has applied to have his property rezoned from an R1 to a PUD zoning district. So whereas the City of Aurora Plan Commission is held a public hearing on the proposed rezone and provided notice of said public hearing is required by the law. So the City of Aurora Plan Commission met at a hearing on Monday, September 15th, and by a vote of four in favor and two opposed and one abstained, voted to forward an unfavorable recommendation to rezone the property described in the Exhibit A to the City Council. So whereas City Council has 90 days to take action on this proposal, in considering this as zoning map amendment, City Council paid reason, will pay reasonable regard to the comprehensive plan. I have a comprehensive plan. If you haven't seen the zoning, I'll get to you before the next meeting. It's about 54 pages. Nicole put some, some major work into this. I wonder what I did just with my, there's a loss of ordinance there. No, I shuffled it underneath there. Basically, this comprehensive plan will show, I just want to make some highlights in it. When you look at it, it shows drainage, they did a traffic study, and basically it also has Nicole's recommendations.
Nicole being the county?
I'm sorry, yeah, the county, our county planning and zoning staff, Nicole Daly, she writes up a recommendation for planning before each planning meeting to describe what her recommendations are on the project. This being a PUD, of course, it kind of falls outside of some of our zoning rules in that the PUD itself, as long as it meets our standards, we can actually create many changes to what our variances are and anything else like that. So that's part of her recommendations is what she want, what she stated and what the developer asked to do. This, of course, was an unfavorable recommendation. Council, of course, can override its planning commission if it so chooses. One thing with this, council for the developer has asked me to read a letter that they proposed, and so I will also be attaching that in the packet that I give council review for the next month. And so it says, Dear City Attorney Eubank, I hope this letter finds you well. We are waiting, writing to you today in your capacity as City Attorney for the City of Aurora, on behalf of our client, Mr. Emmert Lefler. Mr. Lefler is the owner of certain property located within the city bearing the parcel identific, identification numbers, and I won't read those out. The property is the subject of a rezoning application submitted by the Schnicki Development Group, the developer, seeking to alter the zoning for the property from R1 to planned unit development, the zoning application. In connection with this proposed development of 30 residential lots noted as the Woodlawn subdivision of the project, the purpose of this letter is to convey the strong support of our client for the zoning application. The property was the subject of an annexation into the city as approved by ordinance number 2008-8 and initially bore the R3 multifamily zoning designation. Subsequently and unilaterally, without the application of our client, the city rezoned the property to R1 single-family. The project, as outlined in the zoning application, further susisted goals of the Aurora zoning ordinance and its passage resulted in the construction of new high-quality, single-family stock housing. While our client had previously intended to develop the property under its prior R3 zoning designation, they strongly believe that the current proposed project represents the highest and best use of the property. The property currently sits as undeveloped and economically inactive forest and meadowland. By contrast, the project would greatly increase the property's tax value as well as act as an economic park for the future. In addition to the above considerations, proposed project and zoning application further, each of the stated PUD policies is articulated in Section 152.165 of the zoning code. The project would add further choice and options for the city's living environment. The project result in a reservation of two, reservation of two lots representing over one acre of land for open space in addition to the natural. For open space, more than 10% of the property would further the stated goal of preserving natural topography aimed at preventing disruption of natural drainage patterns. The project is designed to reflect an efficient utility layout. The project is in harmony with the land use density found in nearby developments. As you are aware, the PUD request is required for the project to be constructed as it represents a request to reduce the minimum lot size required. The lot size reduction is required in this context due to the challenging nature of the property's specific topographical layout. Additionally, as noted in the zoning application staff report, the base R1 zoning standards would permit 36 lots to be located on the property while the project seeks to construct only 30, with the balance of the property reserved for right-of-way and open space. Therefore, my client strongly believes that the PUD in this contest, in that context, is justified to further the very policy goals outlined for the R1 zoning designation and the zoning code despite these considerations. And then it goes on and it just gives a recap that the zoning board did in fact deny the recommendation. So this is the first reading. I'll get you that entire packet. Please talk to Nicole, myself, or any as you look over this, if you have any questions or if you feel any materials are not provided to you, so, but that's it. Do you, Mr. Schnicki, Emmert, Mr. Lang, do you want to say anything on behalf of council?
Yeah, I was just real, real good. Also, Jared, did, did Kerry, did you send, we couldn't find the comprehensive plan. Is that something? Did you send that?
I can find it. Yeah, I'll see if we can find it.
We couldn't.
Did she ask me for it?
What's that?
Did she ask me for it or something?
No, no, I, actually, the attorney asked me for it. I'm like, well, Matt's out of town, so.
Okay.
So we, we, if you can just get a copy of that.
See if we can find it. Very good.
So I think the important thing about this particular project is Plan Commission did recommend denial, but one thing we did change, we went from 34 lots to 30 lots. We are much lower than, our density is much lower than what the R1 would allow. The difference is being that our lots are more narrow than what your R1 zoning is. Couple of reasons for that. One, topography creates a huge problem. The other one is trying to create, prop, create homes that are, that we feel can be feasible for someone to buy and, and also become a better, a bigger part of this, help Aurora to grow their, their population. These 30, these 30 homes would average 300, right at 300 plus or minus. If we would, if we would go with much small, much larger lots, it would be absolutely not feasible to do this project, and that's just a plain, simple math. At the end of the day, it does kind of come down to a math problem, but I think what we presented and what these guys designed was something that's going to fit really nicely. And, you know, even though it's smaller and narrower lots, it is, it is, it fits a topography. It creates what? A viable unit for, for, for Aurora, which I, you know, it's my second go around in Aurora. I'm hoping to get this one across the finish line, so that's all I got. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions for it.
I think we're good.
Any other statements or anything from you guys? Mayor, I have one thing I want to add. I got this recodification. I was just hoping I could just present it. We already passed it last week, month, but I didn't have an ordinance for anybody to sign for the recertification of our districts.
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just ordinance number 2025-20. Last month, it was voted to recertify our districts. This is the actual ordinance that makes that happen, so if you guys could please sign that and then we'll get it. Report it with the clerk.
So, uh, this time, I would like to introduce an ordinance that I had Jared write. This is purely a budgetary ordinance to try to reduce cost and spending in the City of Aurora, and I had asked him to write one to, to abolish the deputy clerk position in the city. It will save us around a hundred thousand dollars, 66,000 in salary and an additional fees in his, what is it called? Benefits. Thank you very much. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, it's an inordinate abolishing the position of deputy clerk treasurer, whereas the City of Aurora, Indiana, previously established by ordinance position of Deputy Clerk Treasurer assists in the fiscal and administrative duties of the Clerk Treasurer, and whereas the common council, the council has determined that maintaining the position of Deputy Clerk Treasurer is no longer necessary desirable, desirable for the efficient operation of city government, and the duties assigned to that office can be performed by the Clerk Treasurer or otherwise reallocated in accordance with Indiana law. And whereas the council recognizes the importance of ensuring the continuity of city business, including the processing of financial transactions, the signing of warrants and other functions necessary for daily operations, and the council further recognizes the need to safeguard the integrity of all city financial accounts, records, and instruments, and to ensure that any individual who is no longer serving in unauthorized capacity has no access to or control over such accounts. And the city, and council finds it prudent and fiscally responsible to reassign all funds budgeted for the Deputy Clerk Treasurer position to the city's general fund, thereby maintaining transparency and accountability in public finance. And the council further finds that the Clerk Treasurer and mayor should take such actions as may be necessary to ensure the orderly transition of duties to preserve lawful fiscal authority and to protect the financial interests of the city pending the establishment of any further administrative arrangement. So therefore, it'll be by, ordained by the city council as follows. The following ordinance is hereby repealed. That's Section 31 dot 16 Deputy Clerk Treasurer. The effect, so that says there is hereby established the position of Deputy Clerk Treasurer. That's the one that's going to be repealed or that being asked repealed. Effective date, this ordinance shall become effective on December 31st, 2025, or upon passage and publication as required by law, whichever occurs later. Reassignment of funds, all funds reserved or budgeted for the purpose of compensating the position of Deputy Clerk Treasurer hereby assigned to the city's general fund. Eradication of position and security of accounts. The Clerk Treasurer is hereby directed to take all steps necessary to eliminate the position of Deputy Clerk Treasurer and notify all banks, depositories, financial institutions, and state offices immediately upon or prior to the effective date of this ordinance that this Clerk, Deputy Clerk Treasurer is no longer authorized to act on behalf of the City of Aurora. Such notification shall include the removal of any signature authority, electronic access passwords, or account privileges associated with the former Deputy Clerk Treasurer. The Clerk Treasurer shall confirm in writing to the mayor and common council that such actions have been completed. Temporary fulfillment of ministerial duties. To avoid any eruption, any interruption in city business, the mayor is hereby authorized to fulfill any ministerial and administrative duties that may otherwise have been performed by the Deputy Clerk Treasurer, including the signing of documents and warrants at the direction of the Clerk Treasurer, and in accordance with Indiana Code 36 dash 4 dash 10 dash 4 and other applicable statutes, and the Clerk Treasurer determines that a permanent arrangement has been established. Nothing in this section shall be construed to transfer the mayor any independent custody or control of city funds.
What did I do wrong?
You did not do anything wrong.
You are saying that you want to have good controls of the finances of this city, and you're going to say to the Clerk Treasurer, we're taking away your ability to do that. I don't know what I did wrong to you people, but this is very shocking to be blindsided by this.
You were not blindsided.
Oh, yeah, I know. You told, you told me all the 45 minutes before the meeting started. I really appreciate getting that.
And at the same time, I also offered you at that point, maybe we can discuss other options and things. This is purely financial. There is nothing against you.
Oh, I'm aware, more than aware of how concerned you guys are about the finances. Every month I put these out here for you. You guys are the, I'm hearing, oh, we need an audit of these finances, find out what, you guys are that, and I don't get questions at all. No one says anything about where the money goes, and now we're going to say, oh, well, the mayor can make those decisions. He's the one that's spending all the money. You guys approve everything, and this is how my service is, is being thanked? How this employee is being thanked? You are eliminating a position. This isn't even a, don't replace it once this person leaves. It's a, he's gone. I thank you for, for doing the great work of, of guarding the city's finances, but this is the worst way that you could have done it. I do not understand it, and I, I really hope that you guys have your ducks in a row. I guess you do. Laura, there's meetings going on. There's discussions happening. Debbie, Sunshine Lots Meetings, you'll check the newspaper. Maybe it'll happen. Come by, check the door. But the work's going on, the money's going, and I'm just sitting here. And this is how I'm, this is how, this is the most information I've ever been told. Oh, we're, we're worried about the money. We're going to get rid of your staff. When I started, there was two full timers and two part timers. I'm down to one full time. I've done that, and that's me doing this work. When I'm not the Clerk Treasurer, you're not going to get that. Previous Clerk Treasurers didn't work a full-time job and sit here all day. I'm able to do that, and this is how I'm thanked. I appreciate it, guys. This is wonderful.
It has nothing to do with you specifically.
I understand. No, but this is the only time you've ever done anything on the budget for where you've said, we're not going to spend more. This is the first time anybody's said it, and it's the, you go after me. You go after my department that's gotten smaller, that's done more with less.
We're trying to be efficient.
Everybody else gets bigger. Every other department, oh, there's so much work to be done. Yeah, I know. I've got work that needs done. I'm here full time. I'm here after hours. I'm here on the weekends. Orin's here with me on the weekends. We're here working on things to accomplish the things that are required by law by the state. The State Board of Accounts requires us to do these things.
The checks and balances.
I have to have the checks and balances, which you were saying, no.
And it is going to be there. The mayor will be able to do that, checks and balances with you.
The mayor can do your checks and balances. I don't understand taking and saying, yeah, we need a hen house that's guarded. Let's take one of the foxes and put them in charge. And that's what you guys are doing. I disagree with this, but hey, I've always said for many years, get my head shot. I've said for many years, I need my pipe. For 10 years I've said, I don't get a vote. Every, when he voted for the pool and he says, you got your pool you wanted, I said, I didn't vote for it. He made the motion. I don't vote for any of this. This is a decision you guys will make, and I, I hope that it's the right one, but it's the first time you've ever looked at the budget and you've said, oh, well, Benny's got some money, let's take it. I'm already running without a staff personally. I'm doing that now, and that's how I'm thanked. So I've gotten off my soapbox. It's only a minute after eight. I'll leave it. I guess this is first presentation.
It's first reading.
Well, the mayor did eliminate city manager. Austin will no longer be the city manager after first year, so we're going to save $40,000 doing that. But anyways.
I'm going to say that, you know, I, there's no such thing as a bad question. There's no such thing as a, let's talk about it. This is, this, that, that personal, this is poor move when you're looking at fiscal responsibility and you are talking about local checks and balances and you're talking about the efficiency of an office. And I mean, the efficiency of actually the machine that runs through our finances and month to month. This is not somebody that's sitting there waiting to take the $5 check for this or an application fee for that. I, I think this is, while you say it saves money, I think it's short-sighted in fiscal protection and the way we look to say that the city is meeting its obligations. When we go through the State Board of Account audits, which we do every two years, and I get the invite to go sit with them on the entry and exit exam, we have had very, very few things that ever come up. Most of them are ticky tack. We have to find something, will you do this different next year type of things? And that's largely because of the way this office operates. So upon the first reading of this, before it comes up again, I'm going to ask people to think about that because this isn't just a, hey, let's save a buck today. This is a longstanding business practice that you need to be looking at. If you're going to upset the apple cart on this, that's not easy, or better yet, if you're going to knock the train off the tracks, it's not always easy to get that train back on the tracks once the problem has happened. So in my opinion, this is not an idea to pursue, but that's my two cents and I.
And you're entitled to it. You will agree to disagree.
I thank you for, for again, offering a suggestion, an opinion, but, but this isn't an area to, but that's knock one of the wheels off of the wagon and see how far she gets. I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, on a positive note.
It's all positive.
They did have a Bloody Mary, an unofficial Bloody Mary contest that wanted to be announced. Bobby Lyons ran a Bloody Mary contest for all the establishments, the Moos, the Legion, and this and that, and they have come up with, the unofficial winner was the Legion's Bloody Marys.
The S L did not have anything to do with the bar. We were doing the breakfast, but I heard that our, our Bloody Mary bar was fantastic.
All righty, I guess we'll go straight to public comment. Anybody got anything? What do you got with the scouts here tonight, Brent? You got it?
Civic badge.
So attending the meeting, what might be interesting, I'd like to attend so that guys can work on their citizenship in the community.
Okay.
And certainly this meeting's not telling you to disappoint.
Right. Thank you, scouts, for coming.
Would you like to introduce the scouts to us?
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Take the microphone. Grace, Mark, you. Thank you all, right. Tryton, Dick Block, E Block, Kevin Gruden, Ella, Jackson, Ryan, New, Ray, Art. He's actually one of our members too. Thank you for having us.
Brett, you got anybody on the path to Eagle? You got anybody close to Eagle?
These probably are closest right now.
Gotcha. Get on them, man.
We've got like 35 top scouts right now.
Hold on to them. Good deal. Good deal. We'll get you some paintbrushes, get them painting that place.
Point some projects.
All right.
I had, I had something. I just wanted, so like this is a long time in coming, so I apologize to council that it's just now here, but as you know, I was out of town for August, and so this is just a thank you on behalf of the Aurora Church Association. We wanted to thank you guys, and then because of your donation, we were able to have a successful program. We also had participation from St. John's Lutheran School, Faith Walkers, Aurora Church of Christ, Life Church, Ersen God Homeschool Group, Aurora Methodist Church, Manchester Raddies 4H Group, Aurora Main Street, Kryptos Comics, Jaden's Tri-State Toy Show, Go Bananas Daycare, Child Evangelism Fellowship, the Aurora Library, and then some other individuals. We fed anyone who came to eat and ran out of food several days. We were also able to give anyone 18 and under a take-home breakfast due to a grant that Emily from St. John's applied for and was granted for our summer program. On our last day, we fed over 100 people, ran out of school supplies. We actually ran out of the hamburgers, and I think we may have had a couple of hot dogs left. And then we gave away lots of blow sticks, prizes, candy, and clothing. And if anyone would like to be involved next year, we would love to have you participate. We, the past couple of years, just to give you a reason I put in about running out of school supplies, the last couple of years we had not ran out, and then I found other people who needed them. So we had so many people show up that I was like going through boxes of stuff just to give them anything that I had to help them out. So, and then sending them other places that I knew was going to be holding school supply drives. So it was very successful, and that was a major in part to your guys' donation. And then also Madison, who runs Faith Walkers, wanted me to thank you guys for your donation also. She had a fall bash this past Thursday at the pavilion at the city park, and she had over 30 kids come, and I don't know how many adults came. It was the first year we've ever had it, so we were very pleased with 30 kids showing up. We also had some area businesses donate and participate in that, and so we wanted to thank you for that. And I had a question that was not a thank you, but I had a family contact me. They wanted to find out about how a memorial bench, and I didn't know who to contact about that, so.
We can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not really doing memorial benches.
It's for a past town judge that they would like to, her family is interested in it, and somebody who really contributed to the city, so.
Is it tiny?
Huh? What'd you ask?
Past town judge?
Yeah, I mean, tiny, tiny, yeah. Yeah.
All right, we'll get with you on that one.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, before you, Jared. Does somebody have a comment?
Brett beat you to it.
Yeah. Ron, Jared, hit it.
Brett, what you got?
Two things. First of all, I want to commend the city for taking a proactive approach to the Northside Trail. It was about 2009, I'm driving Hastings Island out there and looked at that initially. My reason, I remember, is my boat broke down. We were out there looking a little while, but, you know, I've been kind of trying to help with this CSX thing, and I think bringing Eric on board is the best thing you could do if anybody could get it done, if you can. And I just wanted to, any chance you have the fiscal plan expense side done yet or the annexation?
No, like I said, that's what I was saying, the, we're working with Reedie. That was my lecture. We're trying to get that finished.
Yeah. Well, I know you had the 22 part, they just didn't do the expense side and that.
They're, they haven't done it yet, so I don't have it. It's, you know, it took a while for the first one, so, but that'll be the first thing, phone call, I call again tomorrow, where's our plan at, kind of deal.
Thank you.
Do you have something?
I just want to ask, so comparatively to cities our size, cities our budget, are we, like, how many employees do they have in that Treasury Department? Because I feel like cutting that from two to one, that just seems like kneecapping ourselves to the future, and I think that, I think there should be a lot of gravity approached in that situation. I don't know when the Deputy Treasurer was passed, but I feel like that needs, like, I would like to know more evidence about it on why we could do without it and why we should do without it, because two on the eyes on budget, like two different people on budget seems like the smallest amount we'd want, so.
The State Board of Accounts, when they audit us, part of what they do is, is they make sure that we do have independent checks and balances and separation of duties. The Deputy Clerk Treasurer will perform certain actions that I will review, and then I will do certain actions that Deputy reviews, and they like to see that. Around the state, a lot of times you'll see a number of offices that run with about, about our size, the Clerk Treasurer and another one or two people. Our office, we've, we've been able to, because of the benefit of my remote work, I'm able to be here and do more than I, I had previously. Clerk Treasurers in similar sized cities is, is about that, probably two, three people. I will say that that's one of the things that they, that the State Board likes to look at and see who's, who do you have running your, the, the financial side of the house and making sure that it's independent? It's not just the mayor that's, that's doing those duties or, or another designated. It, it should come from that, that elected official's capacity. They do have a lot of, a lot of places they get criticized for not having enough staff. That, that's been something that we've been hit on a couple of times, and it was more the policies and procedures we didn't spell out. This person does it, then this person does it. So when you look, and I, I've mentioned before, when you look at a city our size, you know, 3,500 residents, $130 million asset valuation, we are larger than, as far as our employee base than, than a lot of cities of that similar size, but it's not necessarily in that administrative department. It's other areas that we've just, we're a little bit bigger than other places. We have some things that are different than other places, and that was a choice we've made. And like I said, we make choices. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad.
Your right question. Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, just could you explain a little further how this process is going to work with the comprehensive plan for the Woodlawn Subdivision? You all are going to take how long to review it? What, I mean, what's this process look like?
Explain it. So what it is, is when planning gives a proposal, either a recommendation favorable or unfavorable, council then has 90 days to complete an action, meaning that this is the first reading, then the next one will be whether or not we want to agree with planning's recommendation or we want to override the recommendation. The issue is, is that if council decides to, you know, basically say, we're not going to approve the zoning change, that's what they call an exhaustion of administrative remedies, okay? And then all of a sudden, the rezon will get fought in the courts or wherever, right? So that's the last step in the review process prior to the courts getting involved.
So it can go to the judicial process if they deny it?
Correct.
Is anyone held liable on this council?
Held liable how, Debbie?
To be sued.
No, no, but the city could, so no one personally, you, I mean, to be sued as a council person, it's, it's, the standard is intentional or gross negligence, right? So you can never. No, no. But the city could. So no one personally, you get, I mean, to be sued as a council person, it's, it's, the standard is intentional or gross negligence, right? So you can never be, you know, held liable.
I've just heard that word thrown out. I just wonder how that actually applied.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And it, that's true of almost any charity board, any governmental board. You really have governmental immunity for your choices in passing or not passing.
Yeah. So in the comprehensive plan, does it give the traffic study? What else Nicole put in this thing?
So it has the drainage and the traffic study included in it. And so I, of course, these are public record. Uh, if you want to come and see it, it's like I said, it's a fifty-four page recommendation, um, and it'll contain all the, everything. The, uh, drainage studies or, you know, basically that's, call your favorite engineer, uh, cause they're hard to interpret, but they show where the, uh, you know, the angles and dangles of the hill are, what the topography is and everything else like that, and the location of where the water is gonna go.
So I've seen the traffic study.
Gotcha.
And so I've approached council to review that, see if it's an appropriate document.
Debbie?
I find it to be too.
Did you see that online? It's available online?
No, I got it straight from Nicole. She, I requested it. She sent it to me.
Okay.
Yeah, it was an email, a one-line email. So I, I think that's a bit odd, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Now, what happened?
At the, the traffic study, the traffic report, um, I believe the highway engineer, Mr. Listerman, referenced its twenty-nineteen Pennsylvania neighborhood study and provided a, a one-line email to Nicole that said he felt like it was acceptable. To me, that doesn't scream traffic study, but what, I mean, what do I know? So I'm just asking you to consider all the things on the packet. Are they reasonable? Like, we don't even know. I, I keep hearing, this project's not feasible, it's not a PUD. Do we know that? Has anybody seen these videos? Or we just been accepting? You guys have seen them. I'm sure you have them as a developer, but has the council seen them? It's a PUD, yes, for test to say, you know, is this true? It's kind of like he's been asking on the financial feasibility. We've seen a study and we've seen what this will do at thirty-six and an R1 versus thirty and a PUD. And, and the last thing, talk about density. I'm curious if you can tell me, like, let's, I'm gonna use a round number. If this is seven acres and in an R1, you can put thirty-six homes, I believe I hear. Does that go edge to edge on the seven acres? And then on the PUD and the thirty acres and the smaller lots, what piece of that seven acres is actually developed? Three in the middle? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, cause that does affect density.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the question real quick. So the R1, so the difference between the PUD and the R1 is the PUD actually has a stricter requirement that you have a green zone, um, than the R1. But I, I don't, I, so you're, ask it again, Debbie.
So if you have seven acres and you're gonna develop it, you do the traditional lots and the Woodlong subdivision.
Right.
You're going out to the perimeter of that seven acres, right? Cause you need that lot size. So they're suggesting thirty on a PUD. Is that three acres down the middle of this seven acres?
I think so. I think you're, it's, it's a tough question because basically it's on a hill, right? So the topography of it matters. You know, the expensive, you know, I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer. I've never been a developer, claimed to be, but I have to have a reasonable belief that it's more expensive to build on a hillside than up on top of the crown of the hill or the toe.
And that's where the feasibility comes in that we're discussing.
Well, I, I believe at one time this property was approved for sixty-four houses.
You're correct, but that's fifteen years ago and it hasn't been buried in twenty-twenty-five. I, I would see.
Well, in, in a perfect world, I, I would like to see ten or fifteen four-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollar houses there, this and that.
Twenty-four?
Okay, but.
I'd go for twenty-four.
This kind of hits it in the middle from the sixty-four to the fifteen that I would like. But who else, who else, Debbie, who else is gonna step up and build something up in there? Are you?
Okay, have you?
They'll, they'll sell it to you.
Do we have a study to show it's gonna take them, I don't know, they can tell me, five, ten years to develop? What is the tax benefit coming to the city over that senior period?
Um, I can answer one thing. Uh, we just had the, the TIF meeting, O-TIF, cause we're also, I mean, if we're gonna do a development, we want to tip it. The assessed value of the biggest chunk of this property is valued at fifty-four hundred dollars, five thousand four hundred dollars. Building one home on that would increase the value by two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. So when you talk about growth, if there's thirty homes, you know, the math comes out, you know, about nine million dollars. So we're taking five thousand, reaching up to.
For how many years of your?
Well, I mean, I can't. Go ahead, Mr. Scout.
Can I answer some of those questions?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't do, if we don't get approved, the feasibility is, you won't see me again in Aurora ever. Cause I can't, you know, I just want to say I can go around. I can't, I can't keep doing this. Uh, and really it is a feasibility. So to your answer, to answer the question about feasibility is, I walk away. And then you gotta deal with, uh, Ember and that's, you know, it's, it's his, it's his land and rights are being challenged in my mind. The other part of that story is, um, uh, we have a contract with Y R Gordon that's going to, uh, based on our contract, you know, some people go sideways, but our contract claim says this thing will be done in three years, lots of. So, you know, that's where basing what we're going. Is it not, you know, you know, I wish I could build ten, five-hundred thousand dollar houses in Aurora too. The problem is, uh, custom guys can't build five-hundred thousand dollar houses anymore. Cause I'm one of them, you know, feasibility is just not there. And, uh, and also, uh, the market, uh, has not proven that, that, that this will, you know, as, as Aurora grows, it gets more development, you know, yeah, you can eventually get enough population where we're gonna have these people move up into five-hundred thousand dollar house. That project is not here. That's not this site. This is the best, uh, and we actually took four lots out. And we had to go back to our builder and raise his lot prices and he, uh, thankfully took it. There's no more.
So what's the lot takedown schedule? If they get it done in three years with thirty, ten a year?
Uh, no, it's not, well, it's not exactly ten a year. It's more like, uh, a big qualify and then multiple after that, you know, we don't really share that, but I will tell you.
It makes a difference in people's minds of how long is the neighborhood gonna be disruptive, noise, you know, dust, the whole, the whole bit. It does make a difference in people's minds sort of the paper or not.
Yeah, I can sit here and tell you all day long, but you know, the economy could, two thousand may happen.
Yes, that is something to consider.
But I will tell you, based on everything else that's seen in Aurora, it's gonna go a lot better than that.
Two quick things. I, I didn't know Austin was leaving us, so that's disappointing news. Sorry to interrupt. First of the year, is that right?
November second, right?
Oh, November second?
It'll be the third. He wants to stay for the chicken dinner for five hours.
Absolutely.
Alright, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Is this last council meeting?
No, I wouldn't say that. There's, we got something going on. So we're just, we're, we're saving money. Instead of having a city manager, we're gonna have like an assistant to the mayor or something. Saving money. He's fine with it. He's got something else going on too, so we'll be alright.
One last thing. I know, no, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to have it. I, I do, I understand the budget cuts and I was at the special council meeting, that's why I'm asking where it will be posted. Cause I only found out about it. I didn't see it posted on the door. I'm not, it's offering anyone. I just didn't, wasn't aware of it, but I made it. And I do have questions on pleasure. I think more people would participate. I don't know how one person can do the pro treasurer job. I'm just gonna say that. I, it is systems and balances. I understand wanting to save money. Um, I would think the State Board of Council would not be bearable on that, but that's just a guess. So I'd be in favor of Benny, uh, you having helped for what that's worth.
Again, I'm extremely shocked by Austin. We took on a city manager, how many years ago to begin with?
Nine, maybe ten.
And there was a reason why we took on a city manager, was there not?
I guess.
Yes.
Things, yes.
I mean, we took on a city manager and we've had city managers, and we've had several different ones over these past several years. And I just wonder, I know Austin does about hell of a city in Aurora. What is, what are you gonna do without him?
Who says I'm gonna be without him?
Where's he going?
We're not having a city manager job. What we're gonna propose is a administrative assistant job, as a part-time job, which Austin has agreed to fill.
Thank you, Austin.
Of course.
I like having you around.
It'll be a part, it'll be a part-time job.
Because I just think if we hadn't have a city manager, how come we all just need?
Thing you got with city managers is what we've been through. We've been, what, every year they, four, they find something, they go, and then you go backwards.
Why not? We've gone through.
Then you get something going on. Then you go backwards again. We're not going backwards anymore. We're gonna keep going forward.
Well, that's why I just wondered, did we have a city manager? We had, had to be enforced and we had to do that. And then now it's something that we can say we can do without, which is what I'm wondering.
Well, everybody has their own ideas. Mayor, different mayors have different ideas. You know me, I, I spend all the money. So, you know, that gives me forty more thousand dollars to spend somewhere. Maybe on fireworks. I don't know. What do you think of that?
Probably.
Okay.
I'm just concerned for Austin to help the city. Cause again, I thought we had that one. So Ken, we already had that discussion. We love him too. But I'm just saying, I thought the city really needed one and I don't want the city to cut itself short.
That's where they got me. That was before they got me.
Like I said.
No, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be okay. Everything's running pretty smooth. Austin's agreed to do a part-time administrative assistant to keep things running and we're gonna, we're gonna be fine. We work together all the time, all day long. So it's, you know, I'll have to pick up a little bit more here and there, but we're gonna be fine. He knows everything going on, so we're not gonna move, move. We're gonna keep going striding forward, so we're fine.
He was fired, if that's what you're thinking.
And Benny was not blindsided either.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got a whole forty-five minutes worth of headway. Don't you worry about me.
Right.
Any more public comment?
About the Woodlong, probably all the residents that live around that area have come and they have said how they felt that they did not want to be changed from Aurora. And, and there's a reason for that. We don't want, we, I mean, we, we value our, our area. We don't want like people crammed in. We want, there are no problems. People want to live down in this, into the city. We're always closer. But we do like where we live. We, we love our neighbors. We, we don't want even more congestion. Throw in thirty houses. Most houses have at least two cars or more. And so you're, you're adding a lot more traffic going through there. That's not counting on, on how it's gonna affect the, you know, our sewage and water drainage or any of that. So I know every time we've had, most of the people come from that area, they've all expressed that they do not want it to change from Aurora. And I just want to reiterate that again. So when people will think that we're, we're not standing up to do, do that, we've been dragging this out forever.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. Anybody else?
On a high note, before you hit that gavel, just to remind everyone that Friday night, there, there may be some Ohio State, Michigan folks that think that's the game. But at South River this Friday night is the game. The Tigers and the Knights.
And the South River will work your butt.
There you go. You'll be sorely wrong about that. And on a small token, Mr. Mayor, unless you're gonna get another Ellie Shooter as your, uh, youth council person, I'm gonna take this to her mom so that Ellie can have that and take it with her.
We're trying to find a way to do that. Uh, I'd like to have two. I'd like to have a junior and a senior, but I don't know that we got room for that.
Well, it's their name, so I would.
But anyways, I know, we're still trying to figure it out. Anybody else?
Tim, why are you wanting now?
My question was, as you said, also that we aren't gonna be able to get anyone else to come build on that land up there. Are you the only developer around here?
Apparently.
I would imagine there's other developers in this, this area, aren't there?
Well, this has been for sale for a while, so.
No, but.
It's still for sale.
Have you looked at our other summer? Have you checked the other developers, have you? Come on.
Why don't you buy it and move into city and I'll put you on councilor. One of my, you might even run for mayor.
Nope. But I'm just wondering, you said nobody else will do it. And he said this is his, his last, last time he's gonna do it. Of course, he's the one who can make the most money off of that, and he knows it. But why is there that generalizer?
We're gonna do, we're gonna do pretty good on taxes. We'll get at least ninety thousand a year off of that.
Starting when, thirty years?
Show me the.
Soon when it's done.
So I mean, show me when. When will we get this coming?
When they're done. As soon as they start developing and, and building. You know how that goes, then you.
When they got built, then they gotta sell. Yeah, you can build the way you want, but they gotta sell to bring in any money in taxes, right?
Well, then they're, they're H O A and then every time there's something in H O A, the cost go up.
Anybody else?
Hey, that's just a second. I'm gonna be the local lady that is on the engineering and development side and just give a ninety-second opinion. Aurora is losing people. The people are moving out. The people aren't moving away. I realize when a person that does not do my job looks at this, they see narrow skinny lots, a tiny street that runs down the middle. I am sorry that housing costs what it does right now. If you want something that anyone, your average person here in Aurora can afford, you are looking at dense housing, small lots, narrow lots. These lots are actually deep. The way this is designed, you put all the housing in the middle, there's a huge buffer around all of the adjoining properties cause there's woods in the back and a hillside that can never really be built on. You're not even gonna really be able to put a shed much more than a hundred foot behind or away from the street. So I realize this looks like, are we in the middle of Mason or downtown? Who knows what? This is not Aurora. This does not feel right. The reality of it is, is the linear feet of street, the lot width that that creates is a huge driver in what that lot can sell for. If you could go up there and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars knocking that thing down and making it flat and then build a bunch of streets and make big lots, you could fit thirty-five lots on there if you wanted to just throw a crazy amount of money at it. That could be done. And every one of those lots with a house on it would be four, five, six hundred thousand dollars and no one would buy it. And that's why no developer wants to come in here and build. That's the problem. If you had people around here that could afford a half a million dollar house to start, you'd have developers climbing all over here. The problem is, is you have a flood plain, you have a river, and you have a hillside. None of those are great to develop in. Will you find a little nook or cranny somewhere that you can make something workable? This is designed for, this was zone R1. Again, if you, if it was flat, we could go back there and put thirty-five houses in and keep things somewhat spread apart and not spend a crazy amount of money. And you might be able to sell a house for three fifty, four hundred. This is trying to make affordable housing within the limits of what you've got. And the reason developers aren't climbing all over here is it's not easy to build. And that's why we're going through a P U D process to try to make this thing work and get it to where you can still have affordable housing on that area. I understand it doesn't look normal, but if you look around, the dollar is what is driving this. And that's the end of the story. If you had people that could buy a more expensive home, they're happy to build them for you. But the reality of it is, is you've got a very narrow window of what you can build, a new house and do a new development for, and what people can come to Aurora and buy. That's it. That, that's all there is to it. The developer can go make a lot more money somewhere else, building a lot bigger houses. So if you send that one down the road and that, that's your choice, that's fine. Don't expect the next one to show up anytime soon. Because those chances for that type of development and the land that's available and what land costs and what people are willing to risk and develop, people aren't knocking your door down right now and they're not going to. And the more times you kick these guys out of town and say, move on, you're, you're setting the stage for that to continue.
But we also live there.
I understand that.
You don't live there. We live there.
I understand that.
We take pride in where we live. So we're not willing to frame that much stuff just so you can worry about, you know, that. No, we actually, we actually love our community.
I, I understand that. And our property is for sale. If anyone wants to buy it, I'm sure he'll be happy to sell it to you.
Erica, just want to add one more thing to your right. It's the flood, it's the hill.
Yeah.
One, one thing that we're missing though, I, I totally agree with what you're saying there. So I know that sounds counterproductive to what I said. Aurora faces more challenges than that. We have US fifty bottom there. We don't have a lot of businesses downtown, the ones we have, we love, but we are miraculously growing that same. We gotta start with commercial business progress first. And then we have something to offer these people to come to Aurora.
We got to start with commercial business progress first, and then we have something to offer these people to come to Aurora. Why could they drive by Casey subdivision off of 275, fight US-50 traffic for an hour at a time, and come to a little 30 PUD subdivision jammed in Woodlong?
Because it's 500,000 dollars, you heard in Casey's, is the answer to that question.
Well, he, that was something that was on for 350, how 300, you're split hairs. Somebody could afford 300, they get up on 350. I, I mean, I can do the math and show you how much you pay, and you can do it yourself.
Sure.
It's, it's split hairs, so Aurora, if you improve this, we have other things that may not make this a desirable, which we all think it could be as a PUD. We have traffic control, number one.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to add that our planning department spent, I think it was, I have to reference the head of it, that a better part of a year coming up of what the studies and the setbacks and everything should be, so if we're not going to rely on our planning and zoning to listen to what they said, and why even bother having them if it's going to be negated?
Well, Nicole is for it, so, I mean, we tried to get opinions from everybody, and different points of view. So the county says it's a good deal, but that committee said it wasn't, so now it's up to.
That committee lives in that area, and that committee spent their part of a year, I believe, coming up with what all the setbacks and the, the numbers were supposed to be?
Cindy, on the other end too, the, the planning commission could also give an approval for something, and council could also deny it on the other end as well.
I understand that.
It, it works both ways.
But then why even have it? If you're going to just, I'm not saying that you are, because I know it's something you have to, to ponder or reflect in your faith. You've heard the citizens that live there say it's not reflective of their current neighborhood, and that's all they're asking for. They're not saying, don't build it, they're saying, build it to look like what we currently have. Not what your planning committee came spending here coming up with. I'm just asking you to take that, be plain in your heart, and consider it in the next 90 days or whatever it is you have to reflect upon it.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they offer up like, there was like 20 different stipulations that the planning and zoning came up with, and I thought like 19 of the 20 were met? And I think the only problem was that there were going to be, they, they reduced it to 30 properties, and then the, there's going to be like four or five properties that are not going to meet, are with requirements between a house. Is what I understood.
Correct.
So that's, I mean, that's.
That's not how I understood it once and after, is that the, the stipulation that the R1 terms, if they were not the same, it's were a bridge of a lot size.
So the. I mean, that's what, that's just what I understood, at the meetings that I went to, and I, I was there at the one where they was like, all right, here's this, 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 and this, and I'm like, oh my God, there is no way this builder is going to come back and meet all this. And then I wasn't able to make the next one, but I followed up, and it was like, okay, they met 19 out of 20, but they still were not in favor of this, and I didn't understand why we wouldn't be.
Because the residents that live there, actually live in that area, were not in favor of it.
I understand what you're saying, all I'm saying is, this planning and zoning committee has to go by all these rules and things that they've set up and put into place. Your opinion matters, but I'm saying that as far as the planning and zoning meeting went, I don't think that was taken into 100% consideration over that. Your opinion does matter, but it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to put it into our, I'm going to thank everybody for their comments and everything, but as far as tonight goes, we're going to be over. There's still going to be more meetings, we still talk to the council and everything like that, but we're just going to be done with it for another night, it's just dragging on and getting nowhere. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second, on favor.
Aye.